Sir, thank you for coming. We'll move on to the consent agenda with your items numbers one through five. Approval of the February first two thousand twenty-two town council regular meeting minutes. Item two approval of the April nineteenth two thousand and twenty-one. Budget workshop meeting minutes, I can believe that's two thousand and twenty, no, it's twenty-one.
Oh. I'm sorry.
April nineteen two thousand and twenty-two. Acceptance into the public record of the April two thousand and twenty-two paid bills. Item four acceptance of the cash receipts and disbursements report for March two thousand and twenty-two. And item number five authorization. Of the capital improvement funds to repair a stucco and apply ceramic paint to the walls on the east side of the garden. East of the amphitheater. Are there any of the council members that have questions or comments on items one through five? Hearing none, I would accept the motion to approve items one through five.
I move that we accept items one through five.
Thank you. Motion is made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion for one through five passes. Call to the public, would I ask you to limit comments to three minutes, please? No political comments. We're here to conduct business for the town. And I believe we have one submission from Mr. Les Hardy. I would ask him to come up to the podium, please identify yourself. And we welcome you.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm Les Hardy, I live on Wildaway. I'm here to give you some happy news, I think, certainly non-political. And I want to tell you a little bit about the recent Carefree Classic Wheels and Wings show at Sky Ranch. It was a big success. Two years ago, I came here and asked for your support. You were very generous in helping in many ways for us to put on that show. We had thirty-five hundred people go through the gates two years ago. But we didn't raise any money for our designated charity, the Carefree, I'm sorry, the Foothills Caring Corps. This year, we partnered with Sky Ranch Airport. We split expenses and with the help of their volunteers and our volunteers. The show was even bigger and better than before, we think over five thousand people came through the gates. And we just wrote a check last week to Foothills Caring Corps, our donation of seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. So it was a wonderful success, I think everybody had a great time. And I have some news. We have really outgrown the venue. Our, our volunteers have decided that in the future, they would like to have. The Carefree Classic Car Show somewhere else other than the airport. At the airport, we only have room for a hundred and twenty cars and we want to get a little bit bigger. There are lots of interesting ideas, I've talked to Vice Mayor Crane. About some of those ideas about where we could have a car show in town somewhere. It has a lot of challenges, but I think hopefully they can be overcome. Second of all, I am stepping away as the leader of the car people. I'm a big fan of George Washington, George Washington served two terms. I served two terms and I'm doing like George, I'm retiring, George retired his tobacco farm in Virginia. And I'm retiring to my cactus garden on Wildaway. So I will be available and active, but someone else is going to take the reins. But we look forward to working with the town and our wonderful volunteers. And I do want to say once again that we could not have done this without the active participation of the town. Particularly Samantha and Dennis were both wonderfully helpful. The fact that this town actively helped us do this really is an inspiration to all of us. I came from a, recently came from a state, I won't name that state, but it's due west of us. Where we're getting a town council to waive fees and have its employees actively help us is kind of inconceivable. So we, we did it, we did it with your help, your gracious help and participation. And we're very thankful and appreciative of that and there will be bigger and better shows in Carefree in the future. Carefree has to have a good car show because you can't let that motorcycle thing down the road sort of showing you up. Thank you. By the way, I do have some extra of these wonderful posters, we did sell them, but we have extras and they're free. And if anybody would like one, they make great placemats, they're plastated on both sides.
Thank you for a wonderful event that you put on in the town, we've had many, many excellent reviews and comments with regards to it. So I thank all of us who are involved in it, is there anyone else who would like to make a statement and call to the public? Hearing none, we'll go on to item number seven, current events, does any of the council have comments that they would like to make? Mr. Vice Mayor Crane?
Yeah, so first Memorial Day, we have a program at the cemetery. Cape Creek Memorial Cemetery off of Pima Road and just south of Cape Creek Road, that's May thirtieth, Monday at eight o'clock. It'll be about an hour's long, guest speaker is Lieutenant Colonel Bob Jeffrey, the POW from Vietnam. So he's flying an F-four Phantom in December nineteen sixty-five, he was captured and then he went home in August nineteen seventy-three. He's our guest speaker, he's going to bring some, if you might remember, some of you might remember. Folks wore bracelets for those missing in action in POWs, so he has, he's going to talk to that as well as his experiences. So anyone who may have worn a bracelet and still have that bracelet. We're going to try to have an opportunity for those folks to speak for a minute, maybe how, when you got the bracelet? What, what do you know about the, the soldier whose name is on your bracelet? He can speak for one or two minutes, so it's kind of a different take on the program, but it'll be interesting. So please, if you have anyone like that, if you, if you are one of, if you're like, if you're, if you're one of those people, please let me know. And we'll have someone there from, some kids from the Snoren Trail School to West End International Amphitheater. Someone from Lady of Joy Church will do the invocation, always have a good one hour program, so please come on out. Leading up to the program, this Saturday, the Patriot Riders will place flags on the forty-one veterans graves in the cemetery. In between now and then, beating up Memorial Day. Commander Dan and post thirty-four will go out and clean up the veteran grave sites. So please come out Monday, the thirtieth of May at eight o'clock, thanks. Oh yes, we'll have the AR, Brothers America Revolution will be there, Veterans Heritage Project will be there, it'll be a good community event as always. And just one other comment, this is going back to Wheels and Wings, so they came up with over about seventy-three hundred dollars for Foothills Caring Corps. That was really a joint effort, the volunteers, the town, Lady of Joy offered their parking lot. And the airport itself, Sky Ranch, made that, made a lot of that happen because of their donations. Basically, they enabled, at the end of the day, seventy-three hundred dollars to go to the Foothills Caring Corps. So again, an event which drew upon all different aspects of the community that happened.
Thank you. Any other comments from announcements? Hearing none, go on to item number eight. Presentation by Mr. Todd Cooley regarding the opening of the Hampton Inn by Hilton in Carefree, this is a.
Sorry. So I'm Todd Cooley, I sleep in Scottsdale, but I live over here at Two Easy Street. For the last year and some, some time period, but I appreciate Mayor and Vice Mayor, Council and staff. All of you for the opportunity to come in, I wanted to come in and answer any questions you might have. Potential economic impacts this year that I see coming based upon, you know, book revenue, any of those type of things. The beautiful thing is what my dad, my folks taught me that it takes a village to raise a child. And this, this structure across the street is quite, is quite a child, so I want to thank all of you because you were the genesis of this thing. And, and I in particular want to thank staff, it has been a struggle, it has been a wrestle, it has been a labor of love. But I can tell you that there's wallpaper on the walls, the mirrors are up, there's blankets on the beds, there's. Stools made out of cowhide, the good news is there is draft beer being installed and grape wine in the cooler. So we were on the verge of opening the hotel very shortly, our goal is to open in June. Our goal, okay, so thank you, but we are very, very close, you know, we're, we're on a tight finish schedule. We've brought some professionals in from Omaha, Nebraska to finish this thing to take over for the contractor that we had driving the process. So we feel really good about getting there, assuming that we, we take care of our business and we do that well, Gary, so we're working on it, so. Anyway, I do want to thank the staff, you know, in particular around the room, I mean, I see Stacy and Mark and Steve and Gary. I think I have a frequent guest pass for City Hall where they just, you know, they either tell Gary, they says, I tell them I'm not here, or they just let me ride in, so thank you all very much, so. We open in June and maybe, maybe the first week of June, it leaves us two hundred and seven days to do business. Two hundred and seven days times ninety-seven rooms is twenty thousand rooms potential, you take fifty percent of that, we could rent ten thousand rooms. We run a hundred and eighty-five dollar rate, that's one point eight, one point nine million, three percent is the TPT, you know. Portion of Carefree, or Carefree in there, I think that's correct, I know it's correct. So overall taxes for thirteen point seven, that's not me, thirteen point nine percent, but I think three percent goes to the city, correct Gary?
Three percent sells.
Correct, so anyway, there's a great opportunity for some direct economic impact. We have twenty new people working over at the Hampton, I have a full staff going, we have, we have a little bit. Alright, anyway, we have a full staff going, the average rate over there is eighteen dollars an hour, that's about thirty-eight thousand dollars per person, pre-tip, post-tip, who knows depending upon the service, so. There's some great jobs there, great potential, we're working close with Cape Creek School District, I'm going to meet with court. And see if we can create a program to start a hospitality program there and move the kids right out of high school, hopefully right into. Hospitality, which is a great, great profession, it has been wonderful to me and I pray and I hope that it can be good to some of the kids in school, so that's our goal, that's our hope. What kind of questions can I answer?
Well, maybe some comments and questions combined, we are, we have anxiously awaited the opening. We look for the Hampton Inn to literally lead the rejuvenation of downtown with the kind of traffic. The number of people in the restaurants and the shops and, and such that are down here, so thank you. You answered mine relative to revenue and, and counts of people. And it's the most frequently encountered question I, I receive, when is the Hampton going to open, we're, we're waiting for them.
Well, I'm sorry that we haven't gotten it open early, when, when I was hired, I was hired last year, at the beginning of last year, and I asked the question of ownership, when will we open? And the statement that was made to me is we'll be opening in August, and I thought, you know, I opened about ninety of these and we got a long ways to go, but I thought maybe we work three shifts here in Carefree, I didn't know, you know? So anyway, the good news is next year, first quarter, huge, huge, pre-bookings are wonderful. I can tell you that there are enormous amounts of group business, 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 business travelers are down, but then this isn't really a business traveler market, this is a destination market, as you probably all know. But massive groups, massive weddings, enormous amounts of business coming out of desert mountain with family get-togethers. It surprised me, but it's wonderful, pre-bookings are very strong. Performa, you probably all saw the Performa back in, you know, two and a half years ago, the rate that they, that was projected by the feasibility people, I think is low. But ownership wants to be fair and do the right thing and service people at an affordable rate and not get too crazy. And so, you know, our other Hilton partner is around the corner, the Boulders, you know, they're going at five or six hundred dollars a night, we won't, we won't, we won't be creeping up there by choice. I want you to know that we made a conscious decision at our property in the early days and they gave it to me not to go with a full liquor license. We will have great beer and great wine, but we will not do a full liquor license, we will not compete against, and I made a conscious choice. The rest of the community, there are a lot of bars that are working hard to stay in, you know, to, to make it through COVID, which they did, but I want to make sure we're doing the right things and being a good neighbor. The artisans, local artist guild, they, they wanted to be part of the hotel, so I met with them and I've offered them the opportunity to place artwork, kind of like we do at, you know, or at the Spanish. Area to put some signature pieces in the courtyard of the hotel. And then in the actual hotel itself, they have to be a piece that will, that will match, so I'm working with the artists to do that. So I wanted to make sure that the community, this is the community's hotel and I want to make sure everyone has a part, so, thank you.
Well, I just, I have a quick question, so will there be an opportunity for, for residents even to, to, I know it's a business, but to come in and maybe take a tour, look around?
The beautiful thing about the hotel council members, I've got to learn all of you councilmen, is that it services the entire community, there is a bar, a working bar in there, beer and wine bar. And we'll have, you know, small, small foods and eateries, small little types of foods. But yeah, it's, it's open to the entire community, we can, you know, anyone who wants to stop by now, I give tours every day, that's why I walk like I'm walking unfortunately. Because there's a lot of steps and that property is a lot bigger than you think it is. So I, I would invite you, I've spent a lot of time with a couple of you, but please, the hotel is beautiful and it's in a stage right now where we're just finishing it up. And I think you'd be very, very proud of what you built. So.
Thanks, thank you.
I, I will tell you this, one other thing, the owners are, as you know, all from Nebraska.
Right.
Everything come off, so there will be a Nebraska bar, no politics, Gary, I'll cover my duck shirt. It will be a Nebraska bar on, on college game day because, and there'll be a Nebraska helmet, it's just going to be home for the Cornhuskers, you know? Unless they're not playing then, it'll be home for the Oregon Ducks, but other than that. Sure, so anyway. Count or Vice Mayor Crane, I interrupted, forgive me.
I was going to say, I think it's just great how you're embracing yourself to the community, so pulling in the artists and the tired, folks you've hired are relatively local, close by. You're out there supporting the Chamber of Commerce in Kiwanis, you're really just active. In the business will be run the same way, so I think that's, that's commendable.
I appreciate that, yeah, let me comment on that, I made a point of the twenty people that were hired, ninety percent of them, eighteen of them are all Carefree Cape Creek residents. One had hotel experience, I didn't care about the hotel experience, I cared about the Carefree heartbeat and way. There's a different, there's a different way of life, that's why we all live up here. And plus, it's nice to have them close when things go bad, so we are looking for housekeepers still, that's, that's a tough one. We, we have some refugees that we were sharing with Spirit of the Desert, we, you know, we're, we're employees sharing up there, which is working well. So that's great, but yeah, I wanted to make a point, it's all things Carefree there, so, yeah.
And maybe you could just talk to some of the things in the hotel that they get unique, you have so many different rooms. Hotel relative to the sun dial, things like that.
Yeah, so there's, there's. Eighteen different room types in the hotel and there's only ninety-seven rooms, so you think, wow, that's a little crazy, there's king rooms and queen, queen rooms. There's sunrise rooms, there's sunset rooms, the sunset rooms have balconies, but there's, because of the shape of that property, that property is a one-of-a-kind Hampton, I don't know if you know this. And it's a big deal, the Hilton Hotels, we will have, we will have massive coverage from Hilton Hotels. Because it's very unique, you know, typically a Hampton Inn is built on an interstate, you probably all stayed those when you're a road warrior, they're a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty dollars, you're Hilton Honors members and that's what happens there. This is just completely the opposite of that, this one is not built for the business traveler, it's a destination property, it has a destination rate, the rooms are oversized, the higher you get. The more expensive the rooms get because the view is incredible, I took Vice Mayor up on the roof and I had a hard time getting him off because he was beautiful up there. Right, so, and then we positioned, if you remember right, when you approved the project, we positioned everything on the, basically the northwest side. All of those rooms, if you look out the window, you can actually tell the time of day by reading the sundial. And, and we will market it as such to, to all the folks that stay with us, telling the story of Carefree, telling the story of the sundial. You know, where the sundials go clear back to the times of Egypt and, and anyway, so it's very, very unique, the morning sunrises. Breathtaking, the morning, the evening sunsets, there's a beautiful, and, and I invite you all to come over and anyone back here that would like to come, just come over and ask for Todd. The patio areas, there's, there's a specific entertainment patio area where you can actually, there's a door that rolls up and windows, you can get drinks, sit at a bar, there's an actual sitting area out there. It's, it's positioned around the artwork and the local artisans there, I want something nice so that. There's great pictures and opportunities for memories and wow moments, you know, that they go home with and they remember us by. And then there's a fenced area, so the pool is completely fenced off, there's four rooms on the ground floor that come out to the entertainment area. That we'll use for a lot of the IP business, you know, for, for the group meetings, the executive meetings that want to be right there and come straight out, the IP rooms, we can strip those rooms and turn them into coat check rooms. But I've, I've had the pleasure of booking every award ceremony here in Cape Creek and I've had the displeasure of canceling everyone because we haven't met our goals. So I don't know how good of a hotelier I really am, so, but anyway, it's going to be wonderful because everyone wants to be there and it's exciting, so. Any other questions? I'd love to have you come over and take a look at what you created, it's, I think it'll shock you. It's, you know, you saw the, the renderings and you heard the proposals, but it will, it will be a massive economic generator in so many different ways and the ripple effect will be amazing, so.
Well, I think it's great you're working with the school superintendent on that program for hospitality, I think that's excellent.
And I purposely tried to make a point of. With the Hilton and being in Carefree, trying to get every leadership role, I want to thank you, I'm on the board of directors for Foothills Caring Corps just recently, thank you so much for your contribution. You know, economic development, legislative affairs, we're the chair of legislative, I, I want Carefree to lead, even to our neighbors to the other side of town, but I, we're going to lead and drive. And, and show, I don't think we should show too much of the economic impact because I don't want to build, but it's a wonderful, wonderful thing, so.
Well, welcome to Carefree and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to it.
Thank you, Todd.
Item number nine, review, discussion and possible action to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero nine. Adopting the tentative budget and bottom line for the fiscal year beginning July first two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, while we're getting closer to the finish line, which is July first, when the new fiscal year begins. But as you know, and, and something that I have stated, that the budget process doesn't happen overnight, it's actually a six-month process and it starts back in, in January, so halfway through the fiscal year. Staff begins to review what their workload is, looks at trends and start projecting needs for the, the following fiscal year. In March, we start projecting out the revenue figures and we get inflationary indexes and, and on various contracts and also revenue figures from the states. So we begin to, to mold the budget. In April, we start sharing what we know at that point in time and we hold three budget workshops, the first budget workshop, we hold with staff. And every year, we have the entire staff here to make presentations, what do they do? Why do they do it? What are their accomplishments, what are their goals for next year? And what potentially are implications on the budget for the upcoming fiscal year? That narrative was our first budget workshop. Our second budget workshop, we put numbers behind essentially what was shared at the first one. So at a high level, we had the revenues and the potential expenses shared with the, the community and the council. At the third public workshop, we coalesce all this information into our program-based budget. And that's the narrative that you and the community have been reviewing over the last two weeks. And something that we reviewed last week at our third and final public workshop. That brings us to where we are today and you can see that the you are here point is, is getting closer to that destination. We're here to look at the tentative budget or approve the tentative budget and essentially that act is adopting our bottom line. And that adopts our expenditure limit for the upcoming fiscal year. Next month at our June council meeting, we'll adopt the final budget, so we hold our budget hearing, our official budget hearing. And in between the May meeting, this meeting and our June meeting, we advertise schedule A through G. That's a state auditor general forms that are given to each municipality and they populate those forms. They advertise those forms in preparation of the budget hearings and then the budget hearing is conducted in, in our case in, in June. So that's a little bit where we are in the process, so we're almost at that finish line. So I shared with you at our last budget workshop, this budget dashboard that I prepare each year and it's a high-level evaluation. Of the forecasted revenues and the anticipated expenses for this next fiscal year. On the left side is the forecasted revenues and we're looking at about seven point one million dollars coming into the town. Of that seven point one million dollars, about sixty percent of it is from our municipal sales tax. And we just got a, a overview of the Hampton Inn and what the Hampton Inn might mean for the town. We have a sales tax centric model, there's no debating that, you look at these numbers, sixty percent of our revenue comes from the municipal sales tax. And we talk about how top-heavy that model is with a lot of large boxes, not a lot, a few large boxes. Which generate a lion's share of that. That is dangerous ground and you think of your own investment portfolio and you hire a consultant, a financial consultant to help you with your financial planning, what does he tell you? Diversification. It's the same laws that apply in our investment portfolio with our sales tax centric model, diversification. So the introduction of this hotel here helps us diversify what we have in the town center. How does it help us diversify? It brings a consumer in here that's putting their head on a pillow at night. That never would have been here. How does that help the town center? We have a number of restaurants that anchor the town center. That generates sales tax. That sales tax, their largest ticket item is at night. It's the dinner crowd. This introduces a expanded population, a expanded consumer base to those respective businesses. We have many residents that say, God, I wish I had this restaurant or that restaurant. Well, this gives us the ability to gain additional traction in the market area to get those restaurants to come here. So it's a means to an end and it helps us with our, our diversification. So that's just one explanation of what we're trying to do in diversifying and some of our economic development strategies. And why they're so important to the town. So about sixty percent of our revenue, once again, comes from municipal sales tax. State share revenue is the next largest percentage at about a quarter of our revenue stream at one point seven million dollars. And user fees about one point uh, two million dollars. And those are the fees for services. So the services that the town staff provides in building review and, and inspections. Um, and, and other types of permits that we issue. Um, there's a labor force behind that. We assess fees to then recover our costs. So those are what the user fees are about. The anticipated expenses, the largest expense is public safety. And has always been public safety within the town of Carefree. At about forty percent of the six point six million dollars that we project over the next fiscal year of operational expenses within our general fund. So that means about two point six of that six point six million dollars is dedicated to both the law enforcement contract. And the contract that we have with Royal Metro. Then uh, evenly split is operations and human resources at about two million dollars or about thirty percent. Uh, of the overall total. We also have a two hundred thousand dollar contingency on that uh, six point six million dollars. Which brings it up to uh, six point eight eight million dollars. We also have our gas tank. Our gas tank is, is very full these days and we talked about why that is. We, we save and then we spend down. It creates an economy of scale when you look at capital investments. And that's what you want when you do capital investments. And we just don't shoot from the hip. One of the things that you'll be reviewing tonight is a deliverable from the strategic plan. Is an update of our pavement management system. Mark will be presenting that tonight. That is a strategic look of how we maintain our streets, one of our largest assets and largest liabilities. And so we strategically program this over a ten-year period. How are we gonna invest in our streets? How are we gonna optimize the money that we have saved? And that's what that plan uh, details. And we're gonna continue to invest over the next fiscal year. We have a project program of about three point two million dollars. We're just finishing a pavement management plan, as we all know, on Cape Creek Road. It hasn't been restriped yet, but there will be new striping going down. Uh, the, the lane markings will be the same as, or before. Um, but they'll be brighter and, and, and obviously the, the road and the, the pavement surface is, is, is uh. Um, looking nice uh, compared to what it was before. So we're, we're pleased about uh, the amount of investment that we continue to make in our streets. We're also looking at continuing to make investments in our fire program. Uh, we're looking at obviously uh, our apparatus. Uh, the life cycle is probably about the, the end of its, its life cycle. It will still work, but we can't get uh, parts for it because the company that originally. We bought it from fifteen years ago is no longer in business. So it's, it's just getting more difficult to get replacement parts. So we will be looking at replacing that fire truck over the next fiscal year. How that all flushes out, I don't know. At this point in time, there are some supply chain issues with ordering fire trucks. So it might be over the balance of two fiscal years that we, we do this fire truck. Uh, but we will be making investment in that fire truck. There is also conversation about the, the regional automatic aid system and uh, joining that. And that's a community conversation that we'll have this coming fall. When we have a financial analyst present the financial capacity of what the town can do. In, in providing automatic aid to its residents. And that will give us an indication of the direction that we go with automatic aid. Um, so uh, that is something that will be coming up this fall when the residents come back into town from their summer breaks. And uh, we can share with them what we know from those financial analysts. Uh, so there will be perhaps some additional capital costs associated with joining automatic aid if the citizens choose to uh, to, to join it. Uh, we do have a drainage project and about uh, two-thirds of those funds are coming through a county grant. So you see the revenue line below, about four hundred eighty thousand of that six hundred and fifty thousand are coming in through a, a county drain, drainage. Uh, grant from the flood control district. Looking at some replacement of, of signs uh, to enhance what we have. Uh, as far as traffic signs. Um, so uh, we are looking at a replacement of some of our signs uh, throughout the town. So overall, we're looking at about five million dollars in, in, in investment from our, our capital funds. So five million in capital investments and about uh, six point eight or six point nine million rounding up for our operational fund, which is our general fund. If you look at our total expenditures, and this is our bottom line figure, uh, we talked about our general fund, which is our operating fund. We talked about our capital improvement fund, which are the brick and mortar projects. There are other funds within our budget and you'll find within this document. An outline of those funds towards the end of this document. And they could be the court uh, enhancement funds. Um, and there's several different funds within the, the court. Which they collect and then we expend from, from those respective funds. There are also grants coming in uh, that we account for. So the flood control grant and the, the fire grant. Uh, is something that uh, is, is something that we have to account for, but our exclusions. From our expenditure of fourteen point uh, two million dollars. So you look at all those exclusions there from the revenue, that amounts to about three point five million dollars. You subtract that from the fourteen point two million dollars. And we have about ten point six million dollars rounding up about ten point seven million dollars. That is subject to our statutory expenditure limit. Our statutory expenditure limit for this uh, fiscal year is eleven point five five seven million dollars. We're about nine hundred thousand dollars below that statutory expenditure limits. These are all numbers that are audited by our auditor on an annual basis. They review this when it goes into the budget. And they're in line with, with what the auditors have, have approved. So the action in front of the council tonight is the approval of resolution two thousand twenty oh nine, which is the adoption of the tentative budget. This establishes the bottom line expenditure at approximately fourteen point two million dollars. And also establishes the public hearing date for June seventh and the beginning of the advertisement period of schedule A through uh, G. The auditor general's forum uh, for the final approval to take place once again on that June seventh date. Uh, that being said, Mayor, Members of Council, I'll be glad to address any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Neese. I think that's an excellent summary. We've spent a considerable amount of time and, and invested thought. And, and had some robust discussions on all of these elements as we've come through. Do any of the council members have any questions or comments relative to this summary? And uh, of the uh, program-based budget which we have before us. Hearing none. I would accept a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two. Dash zero nine, adopting the tentative budget and the bottom line for fiscal year beginning July first. Two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
Second motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes by seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Neese, for uh, spearheading this and some. Uh, Jim Keen and others, Candace, for their tremendous help along the way. Um, item number ten, review, discussion, possible action to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero eight. Accepting into the public record the ten-year pavement preservation program document dated April eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mark, would you take us through this, please?
Yes, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Carefree residents. So um, tonight we're um, here to uh, approve a document. That supersedes the most recent ten-year pavement management program. Um, and um, this, this new document analyzes existing roadways throughout the town. Put forward a document that prioritizes the roadways, the type of maintenance and the most cost-effective time period. To perform that maintenance. Now, one thing that excites me about this is how it was done. So we partnered with a company, which is an infrastructure software corporation called Roadbotics, oh, one word. And how did they analyze the roadway? Well, they took a smartphone, very similar to this. They mounted it on a vehicle and they drove each public road throughout the town. Um, they took a picture every ten feet, which could be made into a video if need be. And um, that's how they went about it. Then they used artificial intelligence. To prioritize the roadway improvements. The thing that interests me about that is it's cutting-edge technology to be able to do this. So don't let anybody tell you that since Carefree is a small town, doesn't mean we can't have. Use high technology to do what we do. One of the uh, things I did with the young engineer who mounted the smartphone on his vehicle, I drove around. Town with him for a couple hours one day. And so we drove um, below the speed limit. Because nobody would ever drive above the speed limit at town. And uh, we got our data and got our pictures and again, it went through the AI to um, come up with the rating system of the town. So the old um, tenure plan is expiring the end of June this year. Um, so this new document would supersede that. Um, this multi-year plan offers a systematic approach to maintenance. That provides long-term financial savings, protects the overall pavement system condition. Extends pavement life and to some extent improves roadway safety. So we're here today to accept this document into our town um, system. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
Wonder if I could ask you to explain uh, how the costs escalate with the uh. Postponing of maintenance on roads, if you could talk about that.
So there's a table in the document. Unfortunately, I don't know where it is, but it's somewhere in there. And it specifically states that a dollar not spent now on pavement management. Could be six, eight, ten dollars down the road. So putting off maintenance is a big concern. And it's not just that. A lot of people think that. Well, let's spend all our money on the worst performing roads existing. Well, that's not a good way of doing it because your um, middle roads uh, and your higher of. Rated roads fall apart just as quickly by spending all your money on the poorer performing roadways. So it's very important to make sure you not only spend your pavement management dollars, but spend them wisely.
So I see that you um, you classified all the different roadways, whether they were excellent condition all the way to critical. Um, but I didn't see anything about what percentage fell into each. So you know, like what percentage of our roads are in really excellent condition versus the ones that need critical care?
Thank you, Councilman. So um, let me uh, give you a high-level view. Um, ten years ago, when we put through a document, our roads were rated. At about seventy-two to seventy-five percent on a scale from one to a hundred. Um, this period, ten years later, our roads were ranked at about a sixty-five percent. Pavement condition index PCI index. So as you can see, it's getting more um, expensive. To maintain the roadways. Our levels are being decreased. And so it's vitally important to make sure that we spend the dollars, but not only spend it, spend it correctly. Hopefully that answers your question.
Mark, just out of curiosity, today, just to repave, run-of-the-mill repaving, what's it cost for a square foot?
Uh, good question. Thank you for that question, Councilman. So I don't have it per se, well, I do have it per square foot. So if we do the most extensive um, type of maintenance, which would be a mill and overlay. Which we did on part of Cape Creek Road, it's about eighty-four dollars a square foot. So it's quite expensive. Yeah, I looked at um, let's say, you know, a nuclear bomb hit Carefree or something. And we had to replace every roadway by um, redoing it from scratch. Um, I think the number I came up with was about twenty-three million dollars. So as Gary pointed out, it's one of our most expensive resources and it's badly needed. People need to get to work. They need to get the healthcare. They need to buy groceries. So we need our roadway systems ten years from now. That may not be the case. We may have flying vehicles. But for right now, we need our roadways.
Someone have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So we just did this report, pretty uh, high-tech report in analysis. So keeping the plan that we did ten years ago. It forecast where it would be in twenty twenty-two, more or less. Uh, the uh, set of curiosity, does this analysis mesh up with where the uh. Plan from say twenty-ten said we ought to be?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So I would have to say no. Because even though we tried to keep up, the costs have grown so much and as Gary stated, we're limited on funding. So we have um, moved down a step or two from where we were ten years ago. With our new capital improvement program and, and getting more funds in that way, we expect to bring it back, if not surpass. The level we ran.
Can I answer that question? We postponed some, correct me for a moment, postponed some street maintenance just because of COVID and our worries about. Revenue into the town.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. And the bigger part of that probably is, most recently in the past year or two. We postponed maintenance because a lot of those roadways were getting water uh, pipe improvements. So it doesn't make sense to, you know, put the pipe in and then come back later with a project. So we're waiting to get the uh, pipes in the roadways and then do our preventative maintenance after that. So that's one of the reasons why we moved down a step or two also.
And another part of, of the report talks about fiscal years when, where I understand this, projects will be done. So for example, it talks about some things at various streets on the west side. Twice says fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight. But that doesn't mesh with this in my head for this CIP project that we approved a couple of months ago. So why is there a difference?
Well, so some of that I would answer, Mr. Vice Mayor, is because our capital improvement program is a five-year plan. Our pavement management program is a ten-year plan. So that's some of the reason why the, the costs don't mesh. And let me also speak to the fact that we've had this document, or we received this document many months ago. And the highest level of pavement management at that point was a mill and overlay. Gary and I discussed that and realized that if we do that as our highest level of pavement maintenance. We wouldn't be able to do everything we need to do. So we stepped down our highest level to be what we now call as a cape seal. Which means a chip seal with a slurry, a micro seal on top of that. Um, so what that does for us, it gets us almost, it gets us about eighty percent of the. Lifetime of the pavement as a mill and overlay. So it doesn't get us to the full a hundred percent of that. It gets us to about eighty percent, but yet it costs about sixty percent less to do that type of maintenance. As opposed to a mill and overlay.
This is ask us when particular street may be refurbished or maintained, have maintenance done to it. Should I fall back on the CIP plan or should I look at this?
So if you asked, you did ask me, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Um, I would recommend that we fall back on this because um, we got through the CIP process really quickly uh, for various reasons, which I won't go into right now. But um, the main component of CIP is this next year. That's the one that's written in stone and has a good estimate for what we plan on doing. But the second, third, fourth and fifth year will be revised as we move down the line. So you'll be seeing, Gary won't like this, you'll be seeing the pavement management costs increase or at least try to increase every year in the CIP program. So we didn't have this document in this stage where you needed it to be for the CIP. So as as I stated, you're going to see a very different uh, CIP program for the following year.
I have a question for you, just out of curiosity. Uh, it seems like those that live in Cal Track Estates unfortunately were the winner of potholes. And uh, by a dramatic win. What's going on there? I mean, that's.
Yeah, so I appreciate that. So um, some of it is, we haven't done a lot in that area for many years. Um, and it shows, there's no question about that. So now they're the highest priority. That's where our CIP dollars are going this coming next fiscal year. And um, that's exactly how it goes when you don't maintain roads over ten years. That's what happens. You'll see things like uh, Cal Track and then secondarily in a close uh, second would be Sentinel Rock. So that's the next area that we'd have to do the following year. So hopefully, Councilman, that answers your question.
I just wonder if it was an an area that had a lot of water or some other issues going on that that was causal.
One of the things that uh, when I first came on council, we addressed that same issue. And one of the aspects that you get into, I'll make up the numbers, but you know, per mile of road, you might have seven residents. And that may cost you a hundred thousand dollars. Well, for a hundred thousand, as you come south, the population increases in the usage of roads. As opposed to seven residents, you may have two hundred residents. So there's a tendency to spend money where the population is and where the greatest usage of the roads was. And a lot of those came in on the county. And that would, that was my question to Mark and that is, roads are a part of it, but we also have culverts and bridges and washouts and and those kinds of things that that come about as well, which have to be added on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very excellent point. We um, have limited funding and we have to be really specific and cost effective where we put those funds with respect to road maintenance. But you're right, we do have culverts that need to be fixed. We have drainage uses that need to be fixed. So there's a lot of things going on there.
And those are big dollar expenditures as well.
And I, as I recall, from the last meeting, we were fortunate enough to get a grant for uh, the one big culvert project, which were expensive.
That is correct. Uh, I'm very pleased to announce that we got nearly half a million dollars to fix one of our biggest drainage concerns. That's been in place as far back as Aerials go on the county website. So we know it was in place in the sixties. I don't know how much longer before that it was in place, but it's badly needed. Um, last year in August, we had what I was thinking of was a more normal uh, rainy period. And I have some videos that just show some incredible flooding in that area. Luckily, um, we didn't get any damage within apartments, but it came very close to damaging.
Is that's a project you anticipate finishing this calendar year for this fiscal year?
I, thank you very much, Councilman. I don't know if we'll get to it this year, but um, we cannot start using funds until the new fiscal year because the grant will pay for that for the first time. Uh, as long as we don't use it until this coming fiscal year. So as soon as July first comes, I'm going to tell the consultant, yeah, go ahead, start doing your design. And it may take um, six months, nine months for a design. We'll immediately go out to bid and make repairs. So I, I don't want to guarantee it's going to happen this year. But it's going to happen as soon as we can get it going.
Great, thank you.
Further questions and comments? Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero eight. Accepting into the public record the ten year pavement preservation program document dated April eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Michael, we approve resolution two zero two two.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes. Item number eleven, adjournment.
I'm ready for adjournment.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. We appreciate.